It's good.
Drew Brice, your delivery drivers.
She's here though.
This is almost as good as, please make me get her water. Alex, you did. You ready? Smithville Board of Alderman Meeting is now called to order. Please stand and join us in the pledge by our friends here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is a consent agenda. Alderman Neuladell.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Alderman Atkins.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item is committee reports, planning and zoning commission, Alderman Chevler, do you have anything to report?
I do. We have had a meeting last week. I believe we're at forty-eight permits, single family, for this year so far. So it's looking pretty good from that perspective. Diamond Creek subdivision is nearly complete, ready for lot sales. Do we still go on that? Okay. And then we'll have this on the agenda today, but we have the McBees Car Wash final plat recommended for approval.
Thank you. Finance Committee, who wants to take this? Alderman Russell or Alderman Hartman?
I can take it, Mayor. Thank you. So we basically called order and then we reviewed November payments in excess of seventy-five hundred. We also looked at the bank reconciliation and Mayor want to note that because we didn't have a meeting the previous month, we did review two months of data. We also looked at the outstanding check listings and then everything that was presented tonight to the Board of Alderman, we reviewed with Stephen and Alderman Russell and Sentia.
Thank you. Next item is the City Ministers' Report. Ms. Wagner, do you have anything to report?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to begin our report this evening with a penning of our newly appointed Sergeant Claire Henry, and I will turn things over to Chief Lockridge to take care of that.
Thank you. Try not to draw any blood.
Well, oh, thank you. We used to have a habit of doing recognitions like this in public meetings pre-COVID, and this is the first one we've done since COVID. So it's nice to have the group back here. It's nice to do away with petitions and have a little elbow room. So I just want to say a couple of words about Claire. Claire's been with Smithville Police Department about seven years now. For those years, she spent as an SRO in the Smithville School District, very successful for years. I know they were sad to see her go, and I think she enjoyed her time there and accomplished a lot. How many years at shop with the cop president? Almost four. Four years. She served as shop with the cop president, steering that organization, fundraising, doing events and helping raise money to take kids' Christmas shopping every year. And we had four very successful years then. She was instrumental in starting the Kids Academy here in Smithville, and then I believe the following year, a junior academy in conjunction with that. She is probably the big driving force between our social media, behind our social media presence. So if you keep up on that, a majority of that that you're seeing is because of her and all most of the community, the community interaction that the department does. And she is a big force behind that and comes up with a lot of those ideas. Claire has a strong work ethic and a great desire to serve this community, and that was one of the major reasons she was selected to be one of the next sergeants for the Smithville Police Department. So I'd like to ask her husband, Joe, who happens to be an independent police officer, to come up here as well and to pin her sergeant's badge on her for the very first time.
All right. Anything else to report?
Just a couple of items. Stephen alluded to this in the budget presentation earlier, but we did receive word last week that we again received the GFOA Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Award that highlights budgets that provide a good amount of information and are easy to navigate. This is the third year we've received that recognition. Stephen and Myra have worked really hard to make improvements to our budget document, and we're really proud of the rating and information that was outlined in the review materials that outlined particular importance in our notations and information on community planning, basically strategic planning, and then also capital improvements. So I want to shout out and thank Stephen and Myra for that work and all of staff in providing that information. Just also want to highlight again, the board retreat next Wednesday. The agenda will be posted tomorrow, and Friday you will receive packets of information. That is my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number six, bill number twenty-nine thirty-seven dash twenty-two.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for bill number twenty-nine thirty-seven dash twenty-two Marketplace TF Revenue Bonds, second reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Make it is here if you have any questions. Killed a lot of trees. A lot. Thank you. Okay, no questions. Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Kabelski.
Aye.
Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Neuladell.
Aye.
Alderman Chevler.
Aye.
Six zero.
Motion carries, Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of tax increment revenue bonds, Smithville Commons Project Series twenty-twenty-two of the City of Smithville, Missouri, and authorizing certain other actions and documents related to the bonds.
Next item on the agenda is number seven. Alderman Hartman.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for bill number twenty-nine thirty-eight dash twenty-two, the rezoning and conceptual plan Fairview Crossing, second reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Atkins. Alderman Chevler.
Aye.
Alderman Neuladell.
Aye.
Alderman Russell.
No.
Alderman Kabelski.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Five one.
Motion carries, Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance approving a rezoning and conceptual zoning plan for Fairview Crossing on certain lands located in the City of Smithville, Missouri, under the authority granted by the Code of Ordinances of the City of Smithville, Missouri.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number eight. Alderman Chevler.
Thank you. Move to approve bill number two-nine three-nine dash twenty-two, the conceptual plan for McBees Car Wash, second reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Atkins, second. We do have the applicant here. Oh, this is for number twelve, right? Yeah, it's for the resolution. Okay. Any discussion? If you're here to discuss the conceptual plan for McBees Car Wash, please fill out a public comment card. If you plan to talk at the meeting anytime in public comment, please fill out a public comment card. Any discussion on number eight? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Neuladell.
Aye.
Alderman Kabelski.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Chevler.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Six zero.
Motion carries, Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance approving a conceptual zoning plan for McBees Coffee and Car Wash on certain lands located in the City of Smithville, Missouri, under the authority granted by the Code of Ordinances of the City of Smithville, Missouri.
Next item on the agenda is number nine. Alderman Neuladell.
Motion to approve bill number twenty-nine forty dash twenty-two, agreement with MoDOT for tap funding, first reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Kabelski.
Aye.
Alderman Chevler.
Aye.
Alderman Neuladell.
Aye.
Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Six zero.
Motion carries, Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a transportation alternatives funds program agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for pedestrian improvements on Commercial Street.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number ten. Alderman Chevler.
Thank you. Move to approve bill number two-nine four-one dash twenty-two, the funding agreement with one-ten Smithville LC.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, before any discussion, I do want to point out there is a Scrivener's error on the agenda items. This information references the southwest corner, which the development is actually the northeast corner, so we're making changes to that for second reading, but what you would act on tonight would be the northeast corner. And I do just want to note that the funding agreement is the first step in review of any economic development incentive plan. This outlines and a carrier establishes an account within the city that is funded by the developer to pay for all fees associated with review of the economic development project. So there is no taxpayer funding and review of the proposal. We do not have, we have a draft proposal at this point in time. We don't have a full submission yet. Our attorneys are still communicating with their attorneys. This continues that process of review.
So noted. Any other discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Chevler.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Alderman Neuladell.
Aye.
Alderman Kabelski.
Aye.
Six zero.
Motion carries, Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance approving a funding agreement for the one-ten Smithville Tax Increment Financing Plan.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number eleven. Alderman Neuladell.
Motion to approve bill number twenty-nine forty-two dash twenty-two, easement with Army Corps of Engineers, first reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Chevler. Alderman Kabelski. Alderman Neuladell.
Aye.
Six zero.
Thank you. Motion carries, Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance approving an easement for water pipeline and pumping facility in support of water supply storage between the City of Smithville, Missouri and the United States of America regarding the easement number DACW forty-one dash two dash two-two dash zero-zero-zero-one as a replacement to easement number DACW forty-one dash two dash twelve dash zero-zero-one-six for the use of Corps of Engineer property and expand, to expand, improve, repair and revise the existing water supply and pumping facilities.
All that for an iWash station? Easy for you to say.
Also, this is as many ordinances as we had in a while, so I'm really exercising my reading skills.
Next item on the agenda is number twelve, Alderman Chevler.
Thank you. Move to approve resolution ten sixty-three, the final plat for McBees Car Wash.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, I'm second.
Thank you, Alderman Hartman. We do have a public, or the applicants here, Ashley, you're there? Can you hear us?
Yes. Can you hear me all right?
Yes. Say your name for the record. You're on the application too, so.
Yes. My name is Ashley Smith. I'm the applicant and pre-construction project manager of McBees Coffee and Car Wash. I wish to speak tonight about the developers' agreement, specifically number four on that agreement. I just want to make it clear that McBees agrees with all other sections of the developers' agreement except for this one. We are being asked to contribute hundred thousand dollars or twenty-five percent of the traffic light construction cost totaling four hundred thousand dollars with MoDOT. We believe that this is not a suitable amount to be asked of one developer. As the application shows the site plan, we have two lots within the subdivision. Lot one is McBees Coffee and Car Wash to the north, and then lot two, neighboring to the south, is completely separate ownership. It's Joel Arub. They're also known for owning La Fuente Restaurants. But as of now, only McBees has submitted for the preliminary plan. We have concrete site plans. We've paid to get the traffic report revised and to split the parcel just so we can buy and develop half of the land. The traffic report that we, that I had done with Jack Hendricks, the city planner, who's been of great help, it predicted eight-point-three percent of total traffic coming from the two-lot subdivision through that intersection. We do not know if lot number two will have a high-volume restaurant there or not with nothing submitted. I've tried to ask them, but have had nothing confirmed, so we just assumed, since they own La Fuente's, that a high-volume restaurant would be put in. So of that eight-three, eight-point-three percent total of the subdivision, they would be five-point-two percent assumed. The only thing we do know for sure is that the McBees will only account for about just over three-point-seven, three percent, three-point-two of the traffic light contribution. I want to clarify, you know, we're only expecting about forty cars during the peak evening rush hours. Nothing too crazy or significant. You know, we're not all hyped up like Whataburger. We have a small privately-owned startup with our first six locations to open this year. It'd be great to have an enormous amount of traffic, but, you know, just not heard of for a car wash. So back to the traffic engineer, if we were to pay what he were recommending, that would be about thirteen thousand dollars or three-point-two percent of that four hundred thousand dollar cost again. So as you can see in the staff report, the city is asking based on what the neighboring development to the west of the intersection had paid in the past with a similar percentage of traffic flow, about seven percent. This was a hundred thousand dollars from three tenants in that strip mall. The problem with this is that the equivalency of this basis has not really been proven at this point with lot two's plan still up in the air. Lot two, once ready, they'll have to submit their own development plan, additional traffic evaluations, and they should be asked to pay their own separate contribution to the traffic light costs. You know, as project manager, if I were to have been aware of the significant contribution sooner than just a few weeks ago, then I wouldn't have been able to work this out between the McBees and Yola Rub, but we are past this point and then hoping to close on Friday or sooner on the lot. Lot two's responsibility should be between the city and them, and we don't believe it should affect the development of McBees Coffee and Car Wash. So I am asking for the development agreement to be revised to only reflect McBees. Lot two required contribution should not prevent our development again from moving forward. If two agreements aren't possible, I would definitely suggest that there at least be two signature blocks, at least one for each entity. So right now it's one signature block. We're presenting both companies, which I don't think will be able to uphold since both entities are completely different ownership. I asked, I would ask the contribution amount to be changed to reflect the cost for each developer separately. I would say that the city should determine each developer's required contribution amount based on the traffic report that we've given. We urge you to consider that McBees is only contributing again that three-point-two percent of traffic flow when calculating the expected cost of the four hundred thousand dollar traffic light construction. You know, with the precedent of that hundred thousand dollars being expected from our side of the intersection, which I do understand, McBees would more expect to pay thirty-five to forty thousand for that three-point-two percent roughly. Finally, there was mention that MoDOT may contribute to the traffic light during the planning commission, planning commissions meeting. Last week, there was discussion that an overage may be refunded to developers involved. I would also like for this to be included in the agreement as well. I didn't want to take too much of your time, so thank you for your time and consideration. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. Again, I've worked closely with Jack Hendricks throughout this process, throughout the pre-op meeting back in October, so he is also very knowledgeable over the project. I believe he's there tonight. Overall, the McBees look forward to being a part of the Smithville community, and we hope to have our location open in spring of next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion by the board? Alderman Neuladell.
Yes, I would like to to see what I don't even really know. I mean, this is kind of a surprise to me. It doesn't, the way she puts it, doesn't seem fair, but I would like to know further. I'd like to know more about what could be done to change that or more of the numbers involved in that situation. I think it's the safest way.
Jack? And also there was mention of the development across the street. So I wonder if I can reference this as well.
Is this, yes. I apologize for my voice. It's going to go away. We look at it a little differently than the applicant. We look at these at the time when the city has the authority to obtain these dedications or don't like if it was a street right-of-way or something like that. It happens in a subdivision scenario. So subdivisions where we usually see this. For us, the fact that McBees has to do a subdivision of somebody else's lot to get it, I understand where they're at. We look at it as the impact is at the subdivision, and that's when we can lock it in with the development agreement. Secondly, I guess the other aspect of it is, I would agree with her estimates on numbers of what McBees would be and what the other restaurant site would be in traffic. The entities involved, ultimately, they provided an update to the traffic study done by Across the Highway, Richardson Street Plaza, based upon all the information through the comments and stuff. The numbers came down roughly at eight-point-three, as she indicated, perfectly accurate. The difference is, the other one across the street was about seven-point-eight percent. So they have actually less traffic than these two based upon the total subdivision. So that's how we reach and how we recommend the amounts based upon that.
And what's that developer's contribution?
One hundred. That's how, some of the errors in the agreement that Ashley pointed out were because I took that agreement and used it.
On the hook for a hundred thousand, or did they already do it when they built?
No. Both.
It's the bare land around the post office that we approved a couple of months ago.
Yes, and both of them are obligated to pay it upon recording of the final plat. So when the final plat gets recorded, that's usually after all the construction's done, all those other things. When that occurs, that's when the fees get paid. That way, everybody's moving in, or the lots are now up for sale.
So they're putting McBees on for a hundred thousand, and whoever owns the rest of that land, nothing? Is that how it's?
Well, actually, the applicant pressing or pushing the matter forward through a lot of hard work, I must say, for Ashley, is the potential purchaser of land owned by the other entity. So we're in a scenario, yes, one entity is going to be paying for it, both of them. That would have happened if Joel Arub, the other entity, would have come forward with the subdivision. Because we don't look at it as which business is going on to which lot, because we don't even know which businesses are going on the other.
Right.
We just know that those types of businesses are going to generate this amount of traffic. So that's how we look at it, because we hit, we ring this bell at the subdivision phase.
Thank you. Thanks, Jack.
I have a question real quick.
Yep.
Jack, if the other plat, when that entity comes forward, if they do and puts a business in there, will the car wash be reimbursed, or will they have any funding to pay at all for the traffic light?
The other one across the street?
Yeah, the other one in the same plat as the plat adjacent to the car wash.
Oh, the, if the restaurant comes in, they'll have to update the study. If they come in in a month or two, it's one thing. If they come in in three years, the intersection will substantially change, will require them to update. But contribution to the traffic light, no. Anticipated, they're going to want another entrance onto one sixty-nine, and that's going to really cause problems that have to be addressed solely by that entity. If it means putting in an island, you know, because it would be south of the intersection substantially. If they had to put in an island or some kind of turn restriction scenario that MoDOT would approve, that'd be a hundred percent on that. So in an ideal world, this subdivision would have occurred by the owner, and then they could have passed the cost off to the purchaser, however they wanted to do that in their negotiation. I think that's where Ashley's point is. Well taken, that they don't have enough time to really hit that and negotiate that point.
Would it, just a question to, I guess, Ashley and maybe to everybody on the board here, would, if we make a motion to move this to another meeting and allow time for negotiation, would it delay any of the building currently that's ongoing? Construction?
Yes, we wouldn't. If we were to delay this meeting, we would not be able to. We have to have the approval on this portion, basically, to proceed with reporting the final plat and construction. The only way to sell the lot is if it's already reported as split, if that makes sense and answers your question. So we cannot build until we have closed on the lot.
Is there, is there an opportunity to defer the payment until after negotiations have been made? The payments.
I hear you, Dan. If I understood that correctly, there's a lot of information. If I if I understood that correctly, there's a lot of information tonight. It's on.
God, I can hear you now.
The payments not till the property is built, correct? Tell it, tell it's recorded, what's?
No, there are multiple ways we've had it happen here in town. A final plat cannot be recorded unless all of the public infrastructure has been constructed or bonds for all that construction have been placed. It's a hundred and twenty-five percent of the value so that it'll ensure that that stuff gets done.
What's the timeline on that happening? So we we approve this?
Well, ultimately, as I understand the timeline from Ashley, they're wanting to close later this week. The only way they can do that is put up a bond for all of the work that's in there, which is the sewer work. Uh, all the other stuff in the development agreement, other than this fee, that's what her interest is. Um, they would have to put up bonds for all that work. And then they could record that plaque. And then the, according to the development agreement, that's in the the resolution before you, that's when the fee would be triggered. As at when they record the plaque.
I I need to know, I need direction from staff or for somebody to is there any happy medium we can come with to appease them to make sure that we're not stepping on toes because we can't, apparently we can't move it, we can't.
When when was this fee given, the hundred thousand dollar fee given to them? Is it something?
A week or two before.
Okay.
About four or five days after we got their updated staffer or their updated traffic report. Which is, we bumped out of the first planning commission meeting because of this too. So
Okay.
Both sides racing to get information as soon as possible. As she indicated, they started in October and then came back in March, I think it was. Um, so.
So we haven't had much time either to try.
They they there's been issues that they've been working through. I'm not certain what they are, but when they came back, Ashley's point was I think we have it all worked out. Let's move forward on it. And so we set a pretty aggressive timeline that we had to adjust to get everything today. The earliest we could have done anything under any circumstance was today because they had to have the conceptual plan had to be approved, which you approved earlier tonight. That's a condition precedent to any final plat on this. So they did all that. And we were able to adjust the schedule to get the 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 final plat portion of it on tonight as well, but kicking it out is obviously going to cause them the issues.
Alderman Cheveller? Thank you. Um, so if say, for instance, we did cut them some sort of a break on this fee, um, does this mean that um you know, if this restaurant does materialize um in the future, um, would would they be required to, could we make them pay the 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 balance of of this at that time? Or if we saying do this now, then it's it's done, we done, we can't really do anything?
There may be a mechanism. It has not been tested to see if if it works uh from a legal perspective, but I believe we may have a chance. Um, the bigger problem from our perspective is the traffic signals on MoDOT's priority list is like number eight hundred. Um, it will move up that list, the more funding that can be contributed to it. Um, and we anticipate that we're going to have significant issues at that intersection once everything starts going on. As the library director's already stated, at three thirty in the afternoon, you cannot turn south.
Right.
Out of out of that side. You have to go there.
Okay, and one more question. Um, so you know, we already have the development agreement across the street, right? And that was for a hundred, hundred K. Um, that's kind of the standard what, you know, um, on the P and Z. So that's kind of how I looked at it at that point. Um, so um, what what is the, is there any difference between that developer and this developer here? You know, I mean, I in the types of the type of project, I mean, they're they're subdividing this land, right? And that that's kind of what they're doing in both cases. So I mean, other than that, I mean, is that? I mean, is is there any major differences that would?
Based on the traffic study, the across the streets actually contributing less traffic.
Sure, y- yeah, yes, but I.
Has the same price tag.
Well, what I mean is from a from a project standpoint, right? I mean, there are two developments. I mean, they're they're developments.
And and yes, I think the only the the only scenario that makes this one unique than compared to the other one is this one is a purchaser that is going through the development subdivision process in order to buy land from some other uh entity.
And typically, it's a developer.
Yeah.
Doing everything and making lots and selling them all, right?
Right. And in this case, um, haven't spoken to anyone about it, but it appears as though it's one of those. You want to buy it? I'll sell it. You do all the hard work. So they had, that's why Ashley's here doing all the hard work.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. Could we uh do it like a conditional approval? Um, a conditional approval as far as if we approve as long as I remember four, I believe was, is agreed to by a certain date. I don't know if that's if that's allowable or not.
If you have before you the resolution itself, you can see the conditions that are placed on that resolution, those would be from a structural standpoint, that's what would have to change if you were going to change it.
You'd have to offer an amendment to the uh development agreement. But we don't know what that amendment would be. You'd you'd have to, yeah.
Well, I think, as I understood Mr. Russell's question, it wasn't amending the development agreement necessarily. It was the timing of when the payments would would occur. The development agreement has both entities in it. It doesn't have both entities' signature block in it, but it has both entities in it, so.
Well, I mean, it's a lot of information, but in my thought process is if our standard is was a hundred thousand dollars from the developer across the street, I just feel it should be the same. It's just kind of my thought process.
Developer would be both plats. Technically.
Mm-hmm.
So what she's saying is she only has half that plat. She should only have to pay half of that bill. But the other plat might not get developed for the next ten years.
Right, and then we're on the hook for the extra fifty thousand.
Right. So we're having a a discussion about either splitting this or saying no and 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 making them foot the hundred thousand. Uh, the other one would be to mend it and adding a signature block that the other entity would come up with the other half. This, I think, but what what Jack said.
Yeah, I apologize if I was confusing here. Ultimately, the development agreement has both entities in it. It's just a, it's as was mentioned, it's a Scrivener scenario. It's not a a essential element. We can flip in, flip out the the signature blocks easily enough. The the difficult thing is we have a development that's going, this is a subdivision. Um, and it's going to have two lots. The subdivision is going to have eight percent of the traffic and the subdivision is going to be the the entity that pays for it. In this case, we have a person doing the subdivision work for one line.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll try to say it the first time. I'd like to make an amendment to add the second entity's signature block and change the amount that McBees pay to fifty thousand and the other entity pays fifty thousand for the for the traffic light. Is that close closer to what we're looking for? Quick runner away, Jack.
Might as well stay up there until someone's done.
See if we can get it done.
From the city's perspective, we don't care who pays, as long as it's one hundred, we're good. The question is really more for Ashley. Can she get? Yeah, yeah, well, and is is can she get them to sign that agreement too? Because we can tweak the development agreement to say each entity, Jola Rub and McBees are responsible for fifty thousand. Then it becomes a question whether she can get them to agree to.
Yeah, because the current agreement says McBees Companies LLC and or Jola Rub LLC.
Yeah.
And both.
I just put them both in there because one's the actual owner of the land, the others, and it it ties them together. Um, it gives them a a tool to negotiate with, so.
Is that satisfactory?
Uh, yes, the only other thing that I did mention was there was a possibility of MoDOT um contributing money towards the traffic light. So if it could be included, um that any refunds would go back to the appropriate uh developers, all all related on all sides of intersection or however that needs to be worded. But yes, the um fifty thousand for each entity, uh, that's something that we could definitely work out and and I agree with, yes.
And if I may to clarify, that matter was discussed, but it wasn't. Um, there was no response or answer to it from the standpoint. MoDOT has the obligation to install it. That's their path during the negotiations with Richardson Street Plaza was it's on our priority list, it's really low. The only way you can move it up is to bring in funding from some of these development developers around here that'll move it up onto it. So it's similar to a a fifty fifty match scenario we have with other construction projects. This is a fifty percent match. Hundred thousand, hundred thousand, it's fifty percent match. MoDOT picks up the rest. The more money that we can as a city put into this project from developers, adjacent property owners, however, means it'll move quicker into MoDOT's priority list.
Right.
So the goal would be if we could come up with three hundred and ninety thousand and say, MoDOT, put this on there tomorrow so we could have everything moving quickly. I don't see that as
It's not feasible, but.
Not feasible, correct.
We'd love, we'd love a lot of things that are feasible.
Sure.
And also, Mr. Mayor, if I may, the the uh the amendment suggested by um Alderman, you you all, the the uh other property owner. We had, I guess we'd have to get their agreement correct, or we could just be on the hook for it for five, ten years, so what fifty additional fifty thousand dollars. We've got to come up with a hundred thousand dollars, so we'd be on the hook for just additional. We, the city, would be on the hook for additional fifty thousand dollars until a property owner decides to build.
Well, as I understood, the the amendment was that in order for them to be able to sell it to McBees, they'd have to pay fifty. If they're both in this development agreement, in order to record the final plat, an obligation both of them have to have. They can't sell to McBees without a final plat and McBees can't buy without a final plat being recorded.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well, that, you know, a hundred thousand dollars is is going to be paid, just it's going to be between them to hash that out, right? Just they and they both have to sign.
Get the stoplight at least moved up to number seventy-nine.
Okay, so we need a second?
Yes.
A second? Is what he's, what he, that's okay?
I I can, I can craft that. However you want.
Update the developer agreement to include two signature blocks.
Yeah, yeah, and we've got to do that anyway.
Okay. So I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the amendment? All of them in favor of amending the resolution to include the additional signature blocks, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Okay, now back to the actual resolution. Any additional discussion?
Mayor, I just could say I appreciate the applicant being here. And that 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 helped a whole lot. So thank you, Ashley, for being present this evening.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks. Okay, all those in favor approving resolution ten sixty-three as amended amended, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is number thirteen, Alderman Cheveller.
To approve resolution thirteen, um, I'm sorry.
Ten sixty-four.
Ten sixty-four, um, to adopt the transportation master plan.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, a second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any public comment, Linda? All those in favor approving resolution ten sixty-four, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Say no? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is number fourteen, Alderman Cheveller.
Thank you. Move to approve resolution ten sixty, I'm sorry, ten sixty-five, the special permit for Lake Festival.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like a second.
Thank you. And the applicants are here if anybody has questions. Uh, any discussion?
Mayor, I'd just like to say thank you to the the committee for updating the map and working with the city staff. Um, we look forward to to the event and appreciate um you being here this evening.
Yep. Anything else? All those in favor approving resolution ten sixty-five, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries. Cheveller's ready to go. Next item on the agenda, number fifteen, Alderman Cheveller.
Thank you. Move to approve resolution ten sixty-six, the temporary liquor license.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, a second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Barb is here if you have any questions. See none. All those in favor approving resolution ten sixty-six, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is number sixteen.
Mayor?
Yes.
Like to make a motion to for resolution ten sixty-seven for the sewer main repair.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Alderman, you at all?
My second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor approving resolution ten sixty-seven, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, number seventeen, resolution ten sixty-eight, Alderman, you at all?
Motion to approve resolution ten sixty-eight, water line at raw water pump station.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor approving resolution ten sixty-eight, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, high service pump, resolution ten sixty-nine, Alderman, you at all?
Motion to approve resolution ten sixty-nine, emergency repairs to high water service pump or high service pump.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor approving resolution ten sixty-nine, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is resolution ten seventy.
Mayor, I'm gonna stand from this.
Go sit by Anna. She's missing some crowd over there. Alderman, you at all?
Motion to approve resolution ten seventy, amending the backfill specifications.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor approving resolution ten seventy, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries. You can stay out there the rest of the night, it's fine. Next item on the agenda is resolution ten seventy-one. Alderman, you at all?
Motion to approve resolution ten seventy-one, renewing the contract for collections.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor approving resolution ten seventy-one, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no.
No.
Motion carries. Any public comment? No? All right. Any new business? I have new business. Anybody else have new business?
I do, Mayor.
Sure, go for it.
Mayor, I'd like to respectfully request the bill number twenty-nine thirty-three dash twenty-two be added back to the agenda for June seventh. Uh, this was the award bid number twenty dash six, uh, sale of city land. So I'd like that to be back on the agenda.
Thank you. Linda, did you get that? Thank you. We'll get that put on the agenda. Uh, new business for me, no meeting July fifth. Falls right after July fourth. Sap is off. They're going to spend their holiday working on our agenda. We will still have a meeting in July, just not on the fifth. So enjoy the fifth. Anything else? Any new business? Good on the meeting cancel is cancellation. All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, a second.
Thank you. All those in favor adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Stand adjourned. Well, I had to talk about it or it wouldn't.